Good morning, everybody. We'll call to order our March fifteenth meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We're going to have our pledge of allegiance and ask Judge Finley to lead us.
Thank you. A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Thank you, Judge. Moving on to item number three, roll call. The clerk would please take role.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutti.
Here.
And Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trax.
I'm here.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Item four point one, if the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: A notification of pending marijuana extraction operation for T P T Enterprises LLC, and liquor licenses discontinued for the Hootsport Smoke Shop, Salem Inn, and Pat's Little Red Barn. Ken Van Buskirk sent in a public comment on the transportation budget for the freight corridor state route three widening project in Belfair and Sweetwater Park. And Margot Connolly sent in an application for the Lotus Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council. Carl Soper sent in an application for the Board of Equalization.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item four point two, we have an announcement by Judge Finley. Judge, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for allowing me to do this. I wanted to tell you that I am retiring. My last day will be June thirtieth. It's been an honor to work in Mason County as a Superior Court Judge. The people here have been fabulous. I, as you know, I think very highly of my staff. I think they're pretty awesome. And that includes the staff we have for the therapeutic courts and for juvenile. These are dedicated people, and it's been a real privilege to work with them. I talk to judges in other counties, and there's always some conflict or some controversy, and that just hasn't been the way it's been here. All of us have always gotten along well and worked hard. So it's been a real privilege, and I also want to thank you for the work that you've done for criminal justice, civil justice. It's very important. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you sharing that news with us this morning and certainly appreciate your years of dedicated service to Mason County. Always have a fond place in my heart for you. You swore me in for the first time after I was elected in twenty sixteen and just was always really grateful for your partnership, and you've overseen, you know, some transition at Superior Court over the years. And so we'll miss your wisdom and your experience, but wish you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to jump in real quick and just say, yeah, I'm gonna miss you. You are amazing, and you're definitely a role model for so many. You've had quite the life experiences. Definitely miss you, but hope to see you at the gym.
Sounds like a great idea.
Your Honor, I've known you since before you were a judge. Met you on the trail. That was a long time ago. I gotta tell you, you've definitely done those that supported you proud, and you've done this county proud. I've been honored to serve with you and always enjoyed when I seen you, and it always brought a smile to my face knowing that we all had done a good thing. So thank you for all your service, all the years that you've been with us, and I very much appreciate you and hope to see you in some other venue at some other time. God bless.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Alright.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Moving on to item four point three, State of the Library presentation by Cheryl Haywood. Cheryl, are you with us?
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioner Trax, Commissioner Schuddy, and Commissioner Netherland. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you Timberland Regional Library's twenty twenty-one State of the Library and several twenty twenty-two initiatives. Before I begin, I would like to thank you for your appointment of Dr. Ken Sebby as trustee representing Mason County to the Board of Trustees. With me today is the library manager for Hootsport Timberland Library, and that's Annie Bowers. Also with us today is Erin Stumpf, library manager for Shelton. And Mary Holtermann is the li- was the library manager for the North Mason Timberland Library. She just left us to go back to graduate school. And so Kinzie Coughlin is the interim library manager right now at North Mason. You should have received the twenty twenty-one annual report for the five counties, and that's Mason, Lewis, Thurston, Grace, Harbor, and Pacific Counties, and a separate report focusing on Mason County. I encourage you to take a look at the longer report outlining additional programs, services, stories, and patron feedback during twenty twenty-one. And for those of you, just a reminder that the annual report is available at trl.org. Throughout twenty twenty-one, Timberland Regional Library continued to innovate and adapt to changing needs. Staff demonstrated their nimbleness and adaptability to changing circumstances. I want to take this opportunity to thank staff across our district for their continued resilience, collaboration, and can-do-iveness. Throughout twenty twenty-one, our libraries continue to be anchor institutions, playing an essential role in the communities we serve. Here are the twenty twenty-one highlights based on Timberland Regional Library's twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four strategic direction, focusing on three topics: local communities and increasing the library's presence in underserved communities; two, partnering with agencies to support diverse communities; and three, empowering children from birth to five, clarifying what they need and how to provide for those needs. Specifically, in Mason County in twenty twenty-one, the exterior of the Hootsport Timberland Library was painted, and with gift funds, we were able to renovate the restrooms at the Shelton Timberland Library. Across the district, including Mason County, Wi-Fi was upgraded at all the libraries and at the service center. We reclassified thirteen thousand picture books into fourteen general themes, and we call this Picture Book City, so that toddlers and preschoolers and their caregivers can find new reading adventures more easily. We added three different formats to for, well, for birth to five and also for some adults, I mean, for adults as well. One is called VOX, B-O-X, Books for Children. These are talking picture books in English and in Spanish to listen and read along to. There's no need for a computer or a tablet or a phone. The second is called Playaways. These are preloaded audiobooks for all ages. And the third is called Playaway Launchpads, with loaded content focusing on STEM and reading for birth to five. These are all new, in addition to offering to continue to offer baby and toddler and family and bilingual storytimes available on Timberland's YouTube channel. We also added several new online resources, and it's actually a long list, and it's in the report. I'm just gonna identify two of them. One of them is ABC Mouse, and this is an early learning resource ages two through eight for reading, math, and science. For years, we provided in-house or in-library access. Now you can access it from anywhere. And then the second one I want to highlight is called Press Reader. This is access to seven thousand world newspapers and magazines from content from over a hundred and twenty countries and sixty different languages. A new twenty-eighth library, the West Olympia Timberland Library at Capitol Mall in West Olympia, opened June one last summer with a two-year lease. This is a demonstration Lucky Day library. Lucky Day meaning it's your lucky day because you're gonna drop by and find a popular bestselling title for all ages. And most recently, a new twenty-ninth library, the Hawks Prairie Timberland Library in Lacey, opened February eighteen with a three-year lease. Again, this is a demonstration Lucky Day library. And we were able to do this because we instituted internal improvements around how we handle our materials, and so we were able to free up staff at both the Olympia Library and Lacey Timberland Library to work in these other branch libraries. You've heard me talk briefly about Story Trails. During the pandemic, we have introduced Story Trails throughout the five-county region, partnering with cities and counties and ports in the U.S. Forest Service and hospitals and just so many different partners. And again, while in Mason County, it's, we partnered with the Port of Hootsport and at the Hootsport Trail Park, and a new title will be displayed each season. And at Belfair, we're partnering with the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. And as usual, all our libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system across the five-county region. And the commissioners know that I have been appointed as a PAC Mountain Board member. This is, I'm serving my second three-year term, and that I lead the One-Stop Committee, which is a subcommittee on the, on the PAC Mountain Board, which oversees the work source system in the five-county region. So now for statistics for twenty twenty-one, there was a thirty-three percent increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Primarily, please remember, we were closed for about three months that year. So physical checkouts in twenty twenty-one was a hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and six. The previous year was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand and sixty-eight. Overdrive, which are our downloadable ebook, e-audiobook, e-magazine, increased by seven percent over twenty twenty. So overdrive checkouts in twenty twenty-one is a hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-six items. We have thirty-six thousand eight eighty-five people who are actively using their library cards in Mason County. And then I just wanted to talk about some twenty twenty-two initiatives, and one is we, we relooked at our open hours last year, and as of January first of this year, we have adjusted them. And so in Mason County, we went from offering a hundred and eighteen open hours to a hundred and twenty-seven open hours. So that's nine more hours in the county. At Hootsport, that's an extra hour. North Mason, Belfair is three hours, and in Shelton, it's five hours. Again, this is keeping staffing levels very, very stable. As you know, just like the county, we are limited by the one percent. We have been in a soft hiring freeze since January twenty nineteen. When I became Executive Director in twenty thirteen, we had three hundred and seven human beings. We now have two hundred and fifty-five people serving the same five-county region. Right now, I'm sure you know Shelton is going through a major refresh. We're very excited about it. Typically, you know, up until about twenty twenty, it was really the responsibility of the city to provide the facility and to take care of the maintenance of it and the upkeep of it and the refresh remodel, so to speak. In late twenty twenty, our board decided to, if, if, if we had enough funds, which we did, to help support our cities. And so we started doing that in the last year, year and a bit. And so we are giving, we budgeted about two hundred thousand dollars plus our staff time to help with the paint, the carpet, et cetera. So we're very, very excited. New furniture's coming in. We aim to open for April one, so just a couple of more weeks, and we thank the public for their patience as we did this three-month remodel. And then in the second quarter of this year, we will be working on the hillside at Hootsport, native landscaping, and we have that budgeted for about thirty thousand dollars. I would like to end this presentation by sharing a quote that I think paints the picture of what Timberland Regional Library has provided to people, especially in the past two years. "A library in the middle of a community is a cross between an emergency exit, a life raft, and a festival. They are cathedrals of the mind, hospitals of the soul, theme parks of the imagination. On a cold rainy island, they are the only sheltered public spaces where you are not a consumer but a citizen instead." Thank you again for this opportunity. Do you have any questions or comments?
Cheryl, yeah, I just had two quick questions. One, just, can you update us on where you are in your audit cycle? And if you have any information from your most recent audit from SAO, if you could forward that on to us. And then just curious, if you, if you mentioned it, I missed it, I apologize, but I think the last time you were in, we had talked about continuing to strengthen the relationship with the school districts in the county. Do you have any, any other updates on that or kind of where we are with either bringing students into the libraries or bringing the libraries to students where they are?
Yes. So let me answer your first question. So we are audited every year because our revenue exceeds ten million dollars, so that's per law, as you know. And so we do get audited every year by the state auditor. Due to the pandemic and their cycle and their staffing levels, they have notified us that they have, the last three years, they kept on, what's the word, pushing up the date to review. And so apparently their laws state that they have to do an audit within a three-year cycle, and so we have not been audited from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, not because of us, but because of the state auditor. And so they are coming to us this fall for those three years. So I can send you the twenty eighteen audit, which was a clean audit. So I can send you that. But again, all those audits are also available on the, on the, I believe, on the state auditor's website as well. In terms of the school districts, we have forty-four school districts in the five-county region. I know you're asking me about Mason County. I know that we have the MyTRL program with Hood Canal, I believe, and with the Shelton School District. I'd have to look up a few others to remind myself of the forty-four school districts. We still have seventeen remaining school districts. We have to work through E S D one thirteen and WISIPC because of the technical as technology aspect of it, working with the school districts that are remaining. Jesse Wyeth or Wyeth Jesse, I'm sorry, I forgot. The new superintendent for the Shelton School District, I just met with him a couple of weeks ago. Up until now, we have not been allowed to go into our library, sorry, into the schools. We've been asking, and they don't want us to go, and so however, in talking with the new superintendent at the Shelton School District, he's very, very focused on school age, like K through five literacy or K through three, early literacy, and so we're, we are, we've exchanged several emails now with his staff and Erin to work, to begin working on early literacy initiatives, including the Summer Library Program, which for us starts June one, goes to August thirty-first, and is also, it's all encompassing. It's all people. It's not just focused on children. He was really excited. He said he came from Seattle. He didn't know much about Timberland Regional Library, and he was very, I have to say, he was pretty impressed with the work that we do around early literacy and was very excited to be partnering with us as we move forward in time. And, and I can get you, I'll get you a full list of the school districts in Mason County that have MyTRL and those that we're still working on.
Okay, great. Yeah, I appreciate that. Commissioners?
Cheryl, Cheryl, if you, you don't mind, give me a call offline here in the near future. I have some issues that have popped up regarding the North Mason one with some citizen input and issues that they've had.
Yeah.
I'd rather handle it unless the citizen decides they want to talk about it today. They're welcome to, but other than that, I'd rather handle it between us, you know, in person over the phone, if we can.
Sure. Although I, I, we understand people's frustration. We're just as frustrated.
Hey Cheryl, it was good seeing you at the PAC Mountain Board Retreat in Aberdeen. That was, it was, it was fun being in person.
Yes, it was.
But I also really enjoy your updates. I have no complaints, no questions. Just want to thank you and your, your staff for doing everything that you, that you've been doing. COVID's been a trial for all of us, having to adapt to different ways of doing things, and so want to thank them for everything that they've done. The Shelton Library is awesome. When my kids were young, we didn't watch TV much. We read a lot. And now my grandkids read a lot, and it's because I think of, you can, you can put yourself in a book and be that person or be a part of that world. So it's just amazing what, what books can do for you. So I appreciate you and your staff.
Thank you very much. I'll relay that. Thank you.
Excellent. Perfect. Well, thanks, Cheryl. Appreciate you taking the time and always great to see your local staff on with us as well.
Great. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Erin, thank you. Take care. Okay, next up, we have item four point four. We have a news release. Planning Advisory Commission vacancy. Is Kel on with us?
Kel is not on today. She's asked me to read it.
Okay.
So this is a new news release for the Planning Advisory Commission vacancy. Mason County is seeking applications for the Mason County Planning Advisory Commission. There is one open seat represented as Commissioner District Two, Kamelchi, Matlock, Hootsport, Lillywhop area. The Planning Advisory Commission is a seven-member citizen board appointed to advise the Board of County Commissioners on policies related to amendments to the Comprehensive Plan, Shoreline Master Program, Resource Ordinance, and other development regulations, including making recommendations on rezone applications. The commission typically meets at least once per month on the third Monday at six P M., with special meetings scheduled as necessary. Appointment commissioner, appointed commissioners normally serve a four-year term. The Commissioner District Two position will be filling a vacancy set to expire in January of twenty twenty-six. Applications to serve on the board are being accepted until the position is filled and should be submitted to the Mason County Commissioners at four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton, Washington, nine eight five eight four. Application forms may be obtained from the Commissioner's Office, three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four nineteen, or visit our website at www.masoncountywa.gov.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Moving on to item number five, this is our open forum, precision input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items that are not on today's action agenda or public hearing. We asked that folks keep their comments to about three minutes each. We have a fifteen-minute total time limit, but we want to make sure as many people that want to speak can speak. So if you want to make comment, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom, and Cheryl will recognize you. If you're unable to do that, you can unmute yourself and get my attention that way. Lisa Renfro, it looks like you'd like to make comment. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. Hi, thank you. Good morning. Yeah, I, I was a little confused, sorry, about the formula that they were supposed to be using or possibly using for growth management at the percentage rate of growth for like seventy-five people versus one point seven five, but, because we're unincorporated, so I didn't understand that. Sorry for all my other questions I had in my other emails. But it looks like if, if I'm understanding it correctly, even if you use the other formula based upon our population and kids in Mason County, sorry, that the growth needed, my question is, does that deadline need to be met by two thousand twenty-five, one year prior to twenty-six, to meet the deadline for qualifying or compliance for two thousand twenty-six from the ten-year from two thousand sixteen when it started? So, so if there's, if there's already been like three hundred houses built in the county, it looks like we would have to have a hundred and twenty-two new growths per year. And, and, and that would, would we be able to meet that by next chair? I mean, the, I mean, by the end of twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-six to, you know, pass that? Do you think that's a realistic expectation or possibility? Because if you take seven thousand people times one point seven five, you come up with a hundred and twenty-two new homes or new people per year, times that, times six, or times that by seven, does the urban growth area have enough spots to make that happen or minus what we've already, what's going to be like the apartment complexes and whatnot? So, so to justify going to phase two on the extension of the sewer, that's why I'm asking.
Okay. Thanks for your comments, Lisa. I'm sure we can give you some information offline.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Next up, I see Larry King, then Ken Van Buskirk, Jean Bray, and Greg Sipnicki. Larry, go ahead with your comments.
When housing is developed, the county has many costs: roads, schools, police, fire department, et cetera. Developers, developers are normally charged per you, per housing unit, but in this case, you, the county commissioners, do not charge them, even though the developers would add the cost to the house or apartment. And now I and the rest of Mason County residents have to pay. And we need you to reverse your E I S decision and charge the developers, not me. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. Ken, go ahead with your comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. First, I'd like to say that I too will miss Judge Finley. She was pretty special, and I wish her the best in retirement. Secondly, I'd like to thank you for acknowledging my correspondence of February twenty-eighth. And I want to reiterate something that I said in there, that it's my opinion and many others here in North Mason, that it's vitally important that the, to the entire community here, that the freight corridor be complete and operational before phase two of the widening project starts. We saw what happened when the initial phase of widening happened and when the sewer happened, and we can't, we can't afford to have that happen again. There's also been some recent developments in the Port of Allen Sweetwater property that you should be aware of. I'd encourage you to watch the last port meeting on March seventh, and feel free to give me a call. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ken. Jean, go ahead with your comments, and then Greg, we'll have you next.
Hi, I'm Jean Bray. I wanted to comment about the Timberland Regional Libraries, and I was recently informed by a neighbor about the PlayAway program. I haven't initiated it for myself yet, but that sounds like a great idea. Okay, so I wanted to comment, and I'm making this impromptu, but about all the deaccessioning that the libraries have done, and I wish Cheryl were still here. So I could have asked about what their process is of deaccessioned items, but there are a couple of items on shelves that used to formerly be in the library's collection that are no longer there. For instance, The Legend of the Tree People, The Story of Bruce Miller, a DVD, and also The Structure of Tawana Culture by William Orne Elmandor and Dr. Krober, his colleague. And these pe- these book and a DVD are now out of print, and the library doesn't hold them in their collection anymore, and they formerly did. And then also a book called Forgotten Desert Mothers, that's by Laura Swan, that's out of print, and she is a Lacey author. And there's planned to be a new book, Forgotten Desert Mothers sequel, in two thousand twenty-two, and I hope that the library purchases that and retains it in its collection, because it's very awkward at this time to obtain these books during this transportation issues with the gas prices going so high and the complexity of our transportation system. And when the library has to request these books from, say, the Mount Angel Abbey outside of Portland, they have quite a collection. I bet Timberland wishes they could have their books, because I recently had to obtain an interlibrary loan on some of the former Bob Woodward books and Carl Bernstein books, and the library doesn't have their books anymore either, either All the President's Men and The Brethren, and both authors, Bob Woodward and Carl Bernstein, have new books out, which prompted my search of the, the titles their former books, and the library, our library just doesn't have them, and it, it's really something. I wish I knew more about the deaccessioning process, and I, I hope they retain more books in their collections. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Jean. Greg, go ahead with your comments.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm, the reason I'm talking this morning is I wanted to, I wanted to request that, I don't know whether it would be the commissioners or whether it would be the staff or a combination of both, but I'd like to recommend that we use the next three weeks. It's gonna be three weeks between now and the week when we have that special meeting on the sewer extension. And it's kind of come to my attention that we, the design to go over Mr. Orvinton's property has been oversized to accommodate future expansion of the sewer. And even though myself and a lot- And um, even though um, myself and a lot of people feel that it's unfair for the county to take on the debt to do that, you know, to do the full sewer extension, it's also unfair for Mr. Overton to have to pay for the oversize. And um, I was just thinking that maybe a compromise um, might be a good idea. Um, where um, that where people from the county can negotiate and see whether they can come up with a fair um, solution that um, everybody can be happy with. And um, if we ended up having the way that it is right now, yeah, that uh, you were able to correct the language in both the scope of the work and how the loan is to be who's responsible for paying the loan, and that's really a good thing. Um, but there's also disagreement amongst the community on who pays for what and everything. And um, I think over the next three weeks, if some type of a solution can come up that everybody's happy with and all three of the commissioners can vote in favor of, I think it would really, um, I think the community would really um, appreciate that. Uh, my, watching the, um, the commissioner meetings and the briefings, I've been very impressed with what um, the staff does and what you all do as commissioners. And I think they have a solution um, where people are happy with it, that nobody feels like um, that it was unfair or whatever, would be just the, the best thing that could happen. And so that's, you know, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Great, great. I'd be happy to have a further conversation with you on that. Uh, okay, any other members of the public for comment? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to item number six, option of today's agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move for adoption of today's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt today's agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of February seventh, twenty twenty-two, and February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two briefing minutes, and February first, twenty twenty-two, regular minutes.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the February seventh and February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two briefing minutes, and February first, twenty twenty-two, regular minutes. Uh, Commissioners, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, our action, approval of action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda, at which point uh, a commissioner or member of the public may ask to have uh, an item removed for a separate discussion and vote. Uh, Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Netherland, if you please, take eight point one through eight point uh, six. Commissioner Trast, eight point seven through uh, eight point thirteen, and I will take eight point fourteen through eight point twenty.
Finally, Mr. Chair, item number eight point one reads, Approval of Warrants and Treasurers Electronic Remittance. Claims clearing fund warrant number eight zero eight six five four two through eight zero eight six seven eight eight. The amount, one million, six hundred forty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-three dollars, eighty-two cents. Direct deposit fund warrants number eight four eight eight one through eight five two seven four. The amount, eight hundred seventeen thousand, sixty-four dollars, seventy-three cents. Uh, salary clearing fund warrants number seven zero zero six four seven six through seven zero zero six five one zero. The amount, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars, sixty-three cents. Treasurers electronic remittance, three hundred eighteen thousand, thirty-four dollars, six cents. Item number eight point two, approval of the amendment to the Interlocal Agreement with Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization, TMBHO, to fund voluntary treatment court uh, judicial services and costs. I think it was supposed to be involuntary treatment, it's just, okay, yeah. Uh, I just have a typo on my paper. Involuntary, uh, item number eight point three, approval of electronic home monitoring contract between Mason County Juvenile Probation and Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, WASPIC, uh, for electronic home monitoring services in lieu of detention. Item number eight point four, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two, to surplus county-owned real property parcel number three two zero zero seven dash one three dash zero 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 five zero, located off of Johns Prairie Road. Item number eight point five, approval of the contract with Mason Health to fulfill the deliverables for the rural communities opioid response program, the RCO RP, with Health Resources and Services Administration, HRSA. Item number eight point six, approval to replace the temporary full-time environmental health specialist, EHS position with a regular full-time EHS.
Item eight point seven, approval for, for the county administrator to sign the contract amendment to the Robert W. Droll Landscape Architecture Contract for an additional uh, one thousand five hundred dollars to complete the work on the park's recreation open space and trails plan. Item eight point eight, approval of the consolidated home, homeless grant, contract number twenty-two dash four six one zero eight dash two zero amendment B, and the CHG contract amendment with Crossroads Housing for the administration of these funds. Item eight point nine, approval of the resolution amending, resolution number twenty twenty dash seventy-four, authorizing the Community Services Director to approve and sign certain consolidated contracts amendments. Item eight point ten, approval of the amendment number two to consolidated contract number CLH three one zero one nine to provide one million, one hundred thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars for uh, DC HS, HLC COVID-nineteen response. Carry forward sixty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-five for ELC COVID-nineteen, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine for emergency preparedness, overdose data to action and off, office of immunization. Item eight point eleven, sorry, eight point eleven, approval of the resolution amending, resolution number one hundred dash sixteen for county-held registered warrant and, and policy procedures. Item eight point twelve, approval of the contract with Mason County Fire District Number Eleven for fire protection, emergency medical inspections and fire suppression services to the county's public works property and buildings located at one hundred Rust Public Works Drive. Item eight point thirteen, approval of the notification of final cost of county road construction project completed in twenty twenty-one, performed by county forces.
Item eight point one four, approval of a new twenty-year lease agreement with the Washington State Department of Natural Resources for the county to continue operating an irrigation system of Class A reclaimed water from North Bay Wastewater Treatment Plant on fifty point three three acres of leased forest land. Item eight point one five, approval for the Deputy Director, Utilities and Waste Manager to execute a contract with parametrics to provide post-closure monitoring and on-call services for the Mason County landfill. Item eight point one six, approval for Public Works to procure the plate compactor off of the Washington State Contract Number twenty-nine fifteen from United Rentals for twelve thousand, six hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Item eight point one seven, approval for the county engineer to trade in three pieces of equipment for a value of seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars for the purchase of a new John Deere loader off of the NJPA Sourcewell Joint Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number zero three two one one dash JDC, with a machinery for cost after trade in of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. Item eight point one eight, approval for Public Works to purchase two automated flaggers through the Washington State Contract for thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars plus sales tax. Uh, item eight point one nine, approval of the resolution for county road project number twenty thirty-five for Boyer Road and CRP number twenty thirty-six for Snyder Road, both projects to convert the gravel roads to chip seal. And item eight point two zero, approval to post and fill the environmental health management position and appoint Ian Tracy as interim environmental health manager. Uh, Members of the public, now that we've read through the uh, items on today's action agenda, are there any questions uh, or items to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Uh, Ken, I see your hand up. Do you have a question, or do you have an item to remove?
Uh, question, sir, sir?
Sure.
Uh, item eight point seven, uh, regarding the uh, pros plan. Uh, in the background, it says that the contractor is requesting fifteen hundred dollars to complete the work, and the recommended action indicates that the work's already been done. Uh, I'm curious, uh, which is, which is uh, what's the case in this? Has it been done, or is it need to be completed?
Yeah, Mark, do you want to weigh in on this? I, I can if you want me to.
Um, my understanding is the, the work has been started, but it was not complete.
So it, it hasn't been completed yet?
That is my understanding.
Okay, so that, the action is uh, a little bit incorrect in that it hasn't already been done?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, uh, wasn't there a situation where there was something that was left, uh, that was left unfinished? It was, ended up being finished, but it was not included in the contract. The amount was one thousand five hundred, but it had been finished?
Yeah, so this was basically uh, held in reserve, um, that if the, if the contractor um, needed it, that it would be there at the end of the deliverable?
Yeah, that, I, I understand that. I, I read that in the background. Um, well, I do have another question.
So, Ken, before we dive into the next question, uh, I, I believe we've already adopted the pros plan.
No, I, I mean, it's a question about the pros plan.
Sure, no, 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 but I'm, I'm just concluding the, the question on the fifteen hundred dollars and whether the work's complete or not.
Okay.
We've already taken action on the pros plan, so I don't know if that helps.
Okay, so if, is it possible that this action that's going to be completed, will it result in changes to the capital facilities plan?
Uh, that, that's a great question, and I think we can talk to Marissa and Kel about it, but I'm, I'm
Okay.
My understanding that they were working on the capital facilities plan at the same time as the pros plan, so
Right.
Um, as we review that, I would imagine that those elements are included in the capital facilities plan, but we can double check on that.
Well, if, if it is included in the capital facilities plan, I'd just like to recommend that it go back before the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Uh, any other members of the public have questions or items that they would like to have removed? Okay, not seeing any uh, other hands up. Commissioners, do you have any uh, items that you would like to have removed for a separate discussion or vote?
I do not.
Okay, well, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the action agenda as presented, items eight point one through eight point two zero.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve uh, items on the action agenda numbered eight point one through eight point two zero. Uh, Commissioners, any discussion?
I have a comment, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Uh, first of all, uh, I, I'm happy that we're able to move forward with Mason County Fire District's Number Eleven uh, uh, and go back to process. We have them appreciate their patience and their time. And item number eight point one nine, approval of the resolution for county road projects. Need to give a special shout-out and thank you to our tip cap committee for all the hard work that they did in uh, getting us to prioritize and remove some of our gravel roads, making them uh, chip sealed roads for people to have better access. Thank you, tip cap.
I'll second that one. Uh, I think that they, they do a great job, and we've got a lot of county roads that, that um, are gravel and, and with our weather, it makes it interesting to, to drive on. So, yeah, great, kudos to them.
Great, thank you. Uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number nine, other business. Uh, if there are any department heads or elected officials on that would like to address the commission, now's the time to do that. Any department heads or elected officials? Okay, uh, seeing none, we'll move on to item uh, number ten. These are our public hearings set for a certain time. Uh, item ten point one, we have a public hearing uh, to approve the ordinance revising Chapter six point three two preliminary plating standards per the attached exhibit with an effective date of April first, twenty twenty-two, and as staff, Alex Pacey, to brief.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good morning. We are proposing amendments to our health plating standards for Chapter six three two. This chapter addresses environmental health requirements for permit applications related to various plating proposals. This chapter was last updated in nineteen eighty. We have found inconsistencies between the state rules and other Title VI chapters. Uh, these amendments bring the chapter into compliance with state requirements and our current review policies. There are no new requirements being proposed with this amendment. We are simply uh, providing clarification for staff and applicants, reducing possible confusion. Uh, these amendments have been reviewed and approved by Board of Health, pending this public hearing and final adoption by Board of County Commission. We are recommending the Board approve the changes with an effective date of April first, twenty twenty-two. I'm happy to take any questions.
Very good, thanks, Alex. Uh, Commissioners, any question for Alex? Okay, uh, Members of the public, if you have any questions for staff on the presentation of changes, go ahead and raise your hand, uh, or unmute yourself and state your name, and the chair will recognize you. Okay, seeing no questions from the public, we'll close questions, uh, and move on to public comment. Uh, again, uh, Members of the public, if you'd like to make comment on item ten point one, uh, please use the raise hand feature or unmute yourself, uh, the chair will recognize you. Are there any Members of the public that would like to make comment on item ten point one? One last time, any Members of the public for comment on ten point one? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and move to Commissioner deliberation or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the ordinance revising Chapter six point three two preliminary, preliminary plating standards uh, per the attached exhibit with an effective date of April first, twenty twenty-two.
I will second.
Uh, it has been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance revising Chapter six point three two preliminary plating standards per the attached exhibit with an effective date of April first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Commissioners, any discussion?
Real quick, I want to thank Alex and, and staff for their um, amazing work on this. It's truly appreciated. It's uh, good to see things updated and, and brought to, what is this now, the twenty-first, twenty-second century?
Very good. Uh, yeah, I'll just echo that. Appreciate Alex and team's work on it and uh, happy to move this forward.
And the same goes here. I appreciate when we uh, streamline things and bring it down to just what's necessary instead of adding a bunch of other stuff. Uh, in all the years that I've been here, we used to have those issues, and we have not since you've been here, Alex. Uh, you're very much appreciated.
Uh, with that, I will call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, all opposed? And the motion carries. Uh, hearing's closed on item ten point one. Um, moving on to item ten point two, public hearing to approve the resolution authorizing the property manager to offer the surplus of the county right-of-way easements along tax parcels number three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four three and three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four four by direct negotiation without public offering to the previous owners. Offering prices may be established by appraisal, tax assessment, or as is otherwise recommended by the assessor's office, and final selling prices are to be approved by the Commissioners. Uh, with that, ask staff, Mike Collins, to brief.
Good morning, Commissioners. A little history on this is uh, Mason County Public Works acquired a right-of-way easement back in uh, two thousand and eleven along these parcels um, for county road project eighteen sixty-one, CRP number. It was called Simmons Road Safety Improvement. The project was constructed, was to construct it, uh, a road east of and generally parallel with US one-on-one between Lynch Road and Old Olympic Highway. The intent was to reduce conflict accidents uh, at the intersection of Lynch and one-on-one. The state end up uh, coming up with their own solution to uh, do some acceleration lanes and decelerate lanes on the state highway, so the project was actually canceled. Um, recently, the property owners of, of the above tax parcels have reached out to the county wanting to reacquire the purchased right-of-way for development purposes. We've reviewed the uh, condition of the right-of-way. It's, it's an isolated system. There's no right-of-way to the north. There's no right-of-way to the south. Um, there's no real use for us uh, for Public Works to uh, to retain it. Um, trying to go further to the south is really steep grades uh, in the land there. So uh, we would, we would recommend to uh, go ahead and surplus this property.
Great. Uh, Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Members of the public, do you have any questions for staff on item ten point two? So use the hand, raise hand feature or unmute yourself and state your name. Any questions for staff in the public? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, at this time, uh, Members- At this time, members of the public would like to make comment on item ten point two. They can raise their hand on the Zoom screen or unmute themselves to make comment. Any public comment on item ten point two? One final time, any public comment on item ten point two? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion of item ten point two and move into commissioner deliberation or motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Board of County Commissioners execute the resolution authorizing the property manager to offer the surplus of. County right-of-way easements along tax parcels three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four three. And three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four four. By direct negotiation and without public offering to the previous owners. Offering prices may be established by appraisal, tax assessment, or otherwise recommended by the assessor's office. And a final selling price are to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second.
We've been seconded to execute the resolution authorizing the property manager to offer the surplus of the county right-of-way easements along tax parcels. Three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four three and three one nine one seven dash two two dash nine one zero four four. By direct negotiation without public offering to the previous owners. Offering prices may be established by appraisal. Tax assessment or as otherwise recommended by the assessor's office, and final selling prices are to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners, any discussion?
I'm just real quick. We did receive some public comment. I believe that that was included in the packets.
Okay.
Also, also, I drive on that road. And the state did a great job with the the revisions that they made on the on the one oh one. Makes it a lot easier. We've had far fewer. Accidents right there at that intersection. And Mike, you are right, there are some steep, steep terrain in that area where the easement. Was looked at going, so the road was looked at going. So thank thanks to staff and to you for looking into this and providing us with as much detail and information as you could.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any public comments in my book. Commissioner Trask, would you share with us the the basic? Idea of their comments, were they for, were they against?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it was from the, I think it was emailed to us. It was emailed out last night, and it was from the property owners. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, if there is no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? And motion carries. Now, item, public hearing on item ten point two is closed, and we'll move on to item number eleven, our board board calendar and reports. Commissioner Trask, we'll start with you, Commissioner Netherland, and then I'll wrap up.
How to find my calendar? All right, later today, we have Mason Transit Board Meeting. Tomorrow, I have Turning Point Board Meetings. A Republican Women's Meeting tomorrow night. Thursday is the chamber meeting. It's the legislative wrap-up. D and R beneficiary meeting. I will be having coffee with Mindy Harlow and Larry Coppola on Friday. Have a WAC L S C meeting, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting. My granddaughter has a performance. She's amazing at performing. She's in a special school, so that's cool. We have ears or have the E O C meeting on Monday, county briefing, WAC Virtual Assembly. My brother's birthday and my granddaughter's birthday is on the twenty second, so happy birthday. Love you guys. Memorial Hall Meeting on Wednesday, Community Action Council Board Meeting. Area Agency on Aging Meeting. Sheriff's Breakfast. I'll be having lunch with Patty Case. And others, again, Public Works Board Meeting. We have those every Friday. A wedding to go to on Saturday. I'm sorry. A, I'll be attending a a campaign kickoff. On. What day is that? I believe it's Saturday. Sorry. Yes, it is. And then. So then we're back to Monday. The twenty eighth for briefings, virtual assembly. I'll be going to, I believe, I have to confirm this, but I will be going to the hub on Monday, the twenty eighth, to talk about Turning Point. And then we're back on Tuesday for commission meeting.
Okay, and and the last week, the last few weeks, we had a left board meeting that got moved forward. We've met with each other regarding the Finance Committee, Ripon Cuddy, and a new business in Belfair. I attended the Port Allen meeting. We got together for labor discussions. I had Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meeting. I was pleased to meet with some of the leaders of our youth athletic groups up in North Mason. And I very much appreciate our Parks and Emergency Management Manager joining us to get to have an introduction and to work with them on the different. Issues that they're facing up there. So thank you to him. Coming up here, we have our Mason Transit Authority meeting, the Gorse Coalition meeting, Mason County House and Authority meeting. I am part of a committee with the North Mason School District to consider their. Year-round school schedules and whether or not they're beneficial or not beneficial. Nothing has been decided. It's just. Fact-finding and discussions and looking at what type of steps it would take, what effects that would have. There's going to be a fundraiser Wednesday night at NEDA's to raise money for. Our local boxers so that they can stay and do tournaments here or at least close by. I have on my calendar Board of Health. I didn't hear anybody else mention that, so that may be an old listing. Is it on there?
Sorry about that. Yeah, I missed that.
I will have several days with the risk pool. North Mason Community Voice, and that brings us back and we start all over.
Good. Thank you, commissioners. Just one item from last week. I had a really positive meeting with. Mayor Nisco and Deputy Mayor Schmidt, as well as City Administrator Jeff Knighton from the city. Just talking about follow-up from our joint council, commission and port meeting in January. Just appreciate their their feedback and their their thoughts on how to move forward in a productive way. Going forward, this coming two weeks, have a meeting with the Squawson Island Tribe later on today. As well as a meeting on the Shelton Mason County Plastic Film Recycling Pilot Program that we're partnering with. Waste Management, S D Johnson, and the City of Shelton on, as well as Mason Transit Meeting. Have a YMCA annual campaign planning meeting this week. Also be attending the legislative wrap-up session on Thursday. Ahead of Thurston Mason B H A S O Governing Board Meeting. Have the S R three roundabout pre-design study stakeholder meeting, the twenty second, as well as the Board of Health meeting. Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board, Sheriff's Breakfast. And the regular staff check-in with the B H A S O ahead of our next regular commission meeting. Commissioners, any other items to come before us? Any other updates or reports? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, we adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. With that, we're adjourned. Have a good day, everybody.
Good on.